Welcome to the Tuesday, March 23rd Reno County Commission. I'll call this meeting to order and we will start the meeting with on a note that Commissioner Sellers was delayed in getting here, so he is joining us by Zoom from Chicago. And so appreciate you taking that time. We'll start with Pledge of Allegiance and followed by a prayer from Pastor Kim Berry from Trinity United Methodist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
You're invited to pray with me. God of community, thank you for this day filled with opportunities to serve one another and make a difference in our world. Help us not be overwhelmed by chaos and fear as we pray for those affected by the shooting in Colorado grocery store. Comfort the families who lost loved ones. Lord, empower us to be agents of peace in our circles of influence. Holy God, direct today's meeting as our leaders work to keep us safe and protected. May differing opinions be heard and respected as we work together for the good of all. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Kim.
You're welcome.
Want to welcome everyone and just the only announcement I have is two weeks ago, we did not know what was happening with SB 40. And so that has been passed. We've also kind of read what Sedgwick County may do this week. And so if a commissioner would like to bring up as an addition, the mask mandate, why the chair would accept that, if not, why we still have it on the agenda for the 30th of March.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request or make motion to add to the business items, a discussion about the mask mandate exemption for Reno County.
We'll put that as item D in the business. Is that satisfactory?
I didn't make a motion on it.
You can just.
Unless you feel like you can add it. Okay.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, roll call then.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hertz?
Yes. All right.
Did you say it was D?
Pardon?
Item D.
Item D in the business item. And that's all I have. Public comment. Is there any one in the audience that wishes to do a public comment? I don't believe.
No, nobody.
Okay, there's no one there. So that's the additions or revisions to the agenda. Commissioner Sellers, do you have any other additions or revisions?
No, I do not.
Commissioner Daniel?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I have one that's been brought up by Randy to delete item D in the consent agenda while there is still some work to be done with regards to proper definitions, if I understand that correctly. So we'll delete item D, which in the packet is the Public Works Utility Policy Revision, and on our agenda it shows broadband. So we'll delete that. Randy?
No additional ones.
Counselor?
No, sir, I have none. Thank you.
All right. So now we'll bring up the consent agenda, which is vouchers with a total of $306,774.57, a cereal malt beverage license for Hutchinson Recreation Commission, a DBA Fun Valley Sports Complex, the Public Works purchase of a 4,000 gallon water tank from Nies Equipment at a cost of $26,800, a Public Works buried utility policy revision, a Public Works County Road Entrance and Culvert Policy Revision, a Public Works oversized overweight haul loads policy adoption, solid waste purchase of a 2017 CAT 330 FL excavator from Foley Equipment for $212,000, a proposal from Hamel Scale to relocate the current scale at solid waste to the new Scale House location, and the purchase of a new additional scale at a total cost of $114,075. And that's a little change from the original request because of the savings of money to relocate the present scale. And so we won't have to buy two new ones. I have one question that I'd like to maybe take off of this, and that's item G, Public Works oversized overweight haul loads policy adoption, and take it up as a separate item after this, if that's all right with everyone. There's just one item on there that I've also talked to Dawn about that I would just like to have a little discussion on. Okay? So I'd take a motion to consent agenda items A, B, C, E, F, and H and I.
Mr. Chairman, I similarly like a discussion on some of the Public Works policies. I don't necessarily have a problem with them. We've had a chance to talk to staff a little bit and just have a just a general concern that it's not even really a concern, just a discussion point that maybe we could talk through. So I wonder if we couldn't just talk about all of the Public Works policies in a separate discussion out of consent.
Commissioner Sellers, did you hear that?
Yes, that was acceptable.
Okay.
So I might make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the consent agenda with removal of items E, well, we're moving D, right? D, E, F.
E, F, and G.
D, E, F, and G with the intent to not take up D further this meeting.
All right.
That work for you?
So you would move to accept the consent agenda without items E, F, and G because we've already taken item D off the.
Okay, if we've taken it off, then it would be E, F, and G then.
Okay.
Right.
Everyone understand the motion? Is there a second?
I would second that.
Okay. Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda A, B, C, H, and I. More discussion?
Mr. Chairman, on the item where we're buying one scale and moving one scale, can county administrator enlighten us more on why it was decided at this point in time we could move one scale and save the county money on the project? I guess, I think it was just two weeks ago that we heard that we'd have to buy two. So what has changed in two weeks that deletes this cost?
Commissioners, when Megan researched it and talked to the contractors and the engineers, found that the moving the current scale with still a useful life was significant cheaper or better cost savings. I don't have the exact dollar amount, but it was after she talked with contractors and the engineers, found out that we could move the scale and be ahead by doing it that way instead of buying two new ones.
Is this part of the project?
Yes.
So it's.
It is part of, yes, moving the Scale House. We didn't put it in the bond, that amount that was paid, is going to be paid out of the solid waste operating fund. So when she went out to bid, found that moving the current scale and just buying one was, I guess, more efficient, a better cost. And we still have useful life of the current scale.
I'm certainly glad that we can save money on the project, but it surprises me that two weeks after we had a report from the engineer on the, I believe we asked the question, and he said that two of them were necessary, that that was in the best interest of the project to do two at this point in time. And how like that can change in two weeks surprises me, but I'm glad for the cost savings.
Okay. I believe we had a second, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hertz?
Yes. Okay, at this time, we will take up, let's take these up. If there's a question on each one, let's take item E up, Public Works Buried Utilities Policy Revision.
Well, I don't necessarily have any particular question in the items themselves. I had a chance to have a conversation with county counselor and department staff and Randy, and my only concern, and I would just like feedback from the other commissioners. Some of, and I was trying to work with Joe, and I don't think we came to resolution on what my concern was. And so I'd just like the other commissioners to weigh in. Some of this looks close to, if not more regulatory in nature than departmental policy. And that, to me, rises to the requirement of approval by this board. I think in the county counselor's comments to us, he indicated that it wasn't necessarily necessary for that to occur. And so I just like clarification on whether this board thinks this is a, some of these items are regulatory and do require commission's approval, or if they're simple policy changes that require only a departmental approval. And maybe I should ask the chair if he would give the county counselor an opportunity to respond.
I'll let Counselor go first.
Do you want me to go?
Go ahead.
All right, Joe Sullivan, county counselor. First of all, the most important thing is that the county commission's approval is on this document. It's recommended and drafted by the Public Works Director, and frankly, the revisions are prepared by him. It was by the county engineer years ago, so there's very little changed on this policy except, as I recall, prior additions referred to the county engineer, which is a position that Reno County no longer has, and it's the Public Works Director who has replaced that individual. So references to county engineer have been changed to Reno County Public Works Director, and there may be some other changes. But it occurred to me that it's the, to me, this is the primary duty and responsibility of the Public Works Director to maintain, protect the right of ways of Reno County, to ensure public safety, to ensure that the county can properly maintain its right of ways without damaging utility infrastructure, which has a statutory right to be there, but we need to regulate where it is. And so prior additions had the Board of County Commissioners signing this document, and the county engineer and Public Works Director were not, did not have a signature line. And it occurred to me when we were editing it this time that really, this is a policy that's recommended by and will be enforced by the Public Works Director. So he ought to be the, or she, whatever it might be, ought to be the implementing authority at the bottom of the document with the Board of County Commissioners having a separate signature line approving that policy. So to me, I didn't understand, to me, Commissioner Friesen perhaps, I did not understand what he was talking about, but I think he raises a distinction without a difference. If it is, even if it is regulatory, you often carry out that authority through your administrators, your county administrator, and your department heads, and as long as you approve that authority, I don't see any legal issue. And I'm not trying to take away from the Board of County Commissioners authority of oversight over matters such as this. That would be my response.
And maybe we're closer than I thought, but I think the conversation or the email, Joe, from you on last Wednesday, when I read, and I'm just reviewing it here, these are internal administrative decisions to be made by the Public Works Director, in my view. That was your comment. And I think that's where I took pause and said, I mean, does it, is it, is that the statement period? Or is your statement, these are internal administrative decisions to be made by Public Works and to be ultimately approved by the county commission?
Well, the document speaks for itself. I mean, I thought we were talking about, I raised the issue because you got the redlined version of the previous document, which only had the county commissioner's signature on it. And I wanted to provide a historical context as to why the Public Works Director is now in that position with the county commission approving. That's all I was trying to do, and I didn't, wasn't trying to take away the commission's authority. I do think that you look to staff members like the Public Works Director in this case, and the expertise provided by the Public Works Director with matters under his purview to draft these documents and to make these recommendations. And I don't know of a county commission which drafts any of our regulations, but that does not mean that, as I've said earlier, that anything that I said in that context, I never thought we got down to that. I thought, I thought the document spoke for itself. When there's a signature line for the county commissioners to approve the document, I mean, that, what I said needs to be understood in that context.
Okay, well, and I don't disagree with you on the fact that, you know, we need to rely on and trust the expertise of staff. I don't, I'm not disagreeing at the, it's just, I thought you were providing opinion that these policies and what I view as regulation did not require approval by the commission. I understand your point that in the end, there was a signature line down there, but that doesn't necessarily change the fact that you said something what I viewed as a little different in your email. And so.
I hope you would understand, whatever I said in there, the context I meant it is what I said today, and that's how I see it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's important that we follow the, we have something here as a commission that is recommended by staff, department heads, and the administration, and that we need to know exactly what's in it. And so that comes to us so we can follow through when we have a constituent that would like to know why this is, that we can point to a document that we know about and that we have approved. I don't know whether that makes any more sense at all, but we rely upon those parties who have more knowledge about things than we do without us taking a tremendous amount of time. And I think the change on this is basically due to some items that were drafted prior to having a county administrator and the process that goes through. And so I'm satisfied with the idea that we get recommendations so that we have knowledgeable information about different policies that could be construed. Some of them are regulations, but that we have that knowledge so we can answer somewhat intelligently when we are asked, if that makes sense.
What's your, what are the commissioners' views on whether this needs approval by this commission?
I feel it does.
Okay.
Commissioner Sellers?
Commissioner Friesen, that it's a better policy if the commission has reviewed it and signed it, because at some point in time, someone is going to question one of the policies in one of these documents. And I think it's appropriate that the commission at that point in time says, this is a policy that we've approved, maybe we need to look at your concern and so forth, but it's just not a matter of a department policy, it's a policy that's been approved by the commission. And I think that's a better approach towards these things than just having a director of the department initiate it on their own.
Well, I think we're in agreement then.
Yeah, we're in agreement. Okay. Any other questions with regards to?
And I just want to reiterate, I didn't really have any particular issues with the policy changes. I mean, they were mostly just administrative items, so.
Okay. Let's go on then to, do you have any questions further with this, Commissioner Sellers?
No.
Let's go on to item F, the Public Works County Road Entrance and Culvert Policy Revision. Are there any questions with regard to that?
I think that was your question, wasn't it?
No, I'm on the next one.
Oh, I'm sorry. The rest of these, I think we're up to your question now, wherever that was.
All right. I had one question that I've already spoke with Public Works Director about, and that is on the weight limit on the oversized overweight haul loads. And my point that I bring out for discussion is that there, and this was, has been on there forever, and that is overweight when the maximum gross weight exceeds 80,000 pounds. Well, I don't know, I can't give you a percentage, but I always tag my semi for 85.5 because that's allowed to have that weight. And if we look at the axle weights available on each axle, it's actually, can be higher than that. But I just, my thought was, do we follow what has always been here, or since we are allowed to go 85.5 gross weight, should that be changed? And in my opinion, I felt that it should be changed to 85.5. And as I looked at this and we reviewed this, yeah, Dawn, please come up, and, because we have discussed this, so.
Yeah, it's like you said, Dawn Britton, Reno County Public Works Director. Like you say, the maximum weight on our county roads for decades or for longer than that has been 80,000 pounds. I think there was a particular time, not too long ago, that anything above that would probably do damage to our normal county roads the way they were then. There would be no objection. I think it'd be fine that we'd make it 85.5. We have a different road system now than we had back then, and that is what a legal load is. So I wouldn't, I don't see any problem to change that to 85.5. And I do understand why it was 80 maybe back in the past.
Yeah. Any other commissioners' comments on the potential to change that maximum gross weight to 85.5? And I would move to amend the Reno County Public Works Department policy for oversized and overweight loads in that paragraph. As per Reno County Resolution 9525, "A vehicle in combination of vehicles shall be considered overweight when the maximum gross weight exceeds 85,500." I would strike the 80,000 and put in place 85.5.
A second then.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Do you want to approve E and F at the same time, or do that?
Yes, let's approve. Would approve, yeah, approve the policy for oversized overweight haul loads with that change of 80,000, 85.5. Is that okay, Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
I'm trying to get it straight here so everybody understands. Roll call.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hertz?
Yes. Okay. That concludes the items with regard to the consent agenda. Business items, Hutchinson Community Foundation, update by Carrie Malloy, Director of Strategic Initiatives. Welcome, Carrie.
Good morning, commissioners. Thanks for having me today. So I'm Carrie May, I'm Director of Strategic Initiatives for Hutchinson Community Foundation. The foundation's mission is to inspire philanthropy, collaboration, and innovative leadership to strengthen our Reno County communities. And as we mark one year of our lives and work being impacted by the pandemic, I want to take a few minutes.
Excuse me, Carrie, could you move that mic down just a little bit?
Sure. Sure, can do it, yeah. I just want to take a few minutes to highlight how we've seen our nonprofit partners rise to the challenge together, as well as offer to provide additional information or connections on anything you're curious about. First, I want to thank you three for acting as the Board of Public Health during a pandemic. Thank you for asking tough questions, listening to our medical professionals, and continually considering how to protect the health of the most people. And thank you sincerely to the staff of the Reno County Health Department for their leadership and collaboration. Their work on the clinical side has been most obvious and immediately impactful over the last year, rightly so. But I've been with the community foundation for nearly eight years, and I want to stress that the Health Department has been and will continue to be a pivotal community partner across the spectrum of public health. And I'm so glad to see coming up on the agenda, the approval of the Community Health Improvement Plan, which shows some of the breadth of their work, and in particular, their accreditation approval, which they've been working on for a very long time, and shows the high quality of their work. So congratulations to everybody at the Health Department. So you've heard a lot about the clinical efforts and progress over the last year, but today I want to highlight what has been happening in the social sector, especially around the social determinants of health, the conditions in the environment in which people are born, work, play, worship, and age, that affect a wide range of health functioning and quality of life outcomes and risks. Over the last few years, and especially in 2020, the three qualities of a community that so many local conversations have come back to are connected, resilient, and thriving. Much of the last year has been spent in reactive problem solving mode, but through it all and at the same time, many of us have been actively working to create this connected, resilient, and thriving community and future for Hutchinson and Reno County. And in many cases, this work didn't slow down, but instead shifted into high gear over the last year. The battle against COVID-19 has given us a gift of collaboration through the vulnerability relationships and shared purpose that have been required of us. When uncertainty and frustration prevailed, we turned toward each other in many ways that may not have been possible or considered before. Many of us acted as a community of coworkers, exploring opportunities and challenges together, experimenting and learning what worked and what didn't. We approached the challenge with the mindset, what can we do? What's possible now that wasn't before? So in late March 2020, almost exactly a year ago, diverse partners began gathering over Zoom for frequent check-ins, information sharing, and idea exploration, as well as connecting regularly on a private Facebook group. This effort, Nonprofits Connect, had 120 registered attendees with an average of 25 attending each week over 31 Friday mornings and 14 Tuesday afternoons. They kept coming back, they said, for relationship building with cross-sector partners and the potential for collaboration and progress. Some of those conversations have spurred long-needed innovation in our local support system. In May 2020, a postcard was sent to every household in Reno County with information on both how to seek resources and how to provide resources. Those in need were prompted to apply for assistance at rallyreno.org if they had been impacted by COVID-19. So many needed the emergency support provided by the VOAD Unmet Needs Fund at the United Way of Reno County that by fall, a care coordinator was hired to listen to and better understand their larger barriers to stability. And just one. In just one short year, that fund is now empty. The United Way processed nine hundred and seventeen applications, helped four hundred and twenty-three families, and gave out over two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in funds to Reno County residents. The cracks in our safety net were exposed, and we struggled to keep people from falling through those gaps. This effort was only possible through the collaboration of partners, including the Hutch Chamber, United Way, VOAD, Health Department, and Salvation Army, who leveraged their relationships and resources to help the most sectors and the most people through efficient and effective means. When food insecurity across the county flared up last spring, partners coordinated to ensure that someone in need could get at least one hot meal most days of the week. United Way of Reno County and the Food Bank partnered with RCAT to deliver food to the Fairfield District to distribute to families. Through Reno County's Pathways to a Healthy Kansas Grant from Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Kansas, the Heal Reno County Coalition was able to redirect some funds to purchase local produce boxes from local grocery stores to be distributed through commodity distribution and community food pantries in southern and western Reno County. And amid this ever-growing need for financial assistance and better communication among partners, more experiments are at work to address the fractures in the local support system. Now, partners are working across, working toward a system-wide approach called No Wrong Door, where every door is the right war, door to ask for help and be connected warmly to the right person that can meet a certain need. At its core, No Wrong Door is meant to strengthen partner relationships and prevent re-traumatizing individuals seeking assistance. And I want to clarify that it's not a new organization, it's a theory and an approach that we want to take collectively together. Another urgent gap is addressing availability and affordability of high-quality childcare. This is, again, a pervasive issue that existed long before COVID- nineteen. The situation was exacerbated by all of the changes in work, school, and safety requirements of the last year. A subset of the K Ready Reno County Coalition has been checking in regularly on the state of childcare in Reno County and directing mini-grants to childcare providers whenever possible, including a grant cycle open right now at rallyreno.org. Partners are motivated now to go beyond the survival state, just trying to hold on to every childcare provider and slot that we can to actually change the system and the business model of childcare. Our rural districts are already in this mode, as Fairfield, Pretty Prairie, Haven, Nickerson, and Bueller each leverage grant funds and innovative models to serve as many three- and four-year-olds as possible all day and all week as there are few to no other childcare options in their districts. Fairfield has even experimented with infant and toddler care to fill that critical gap for their parents. It will truly take all of us and all sectors coming together to make early childhood a priority for the prosperity of our current and future workforce. The pandemic has given nonprofits a lot of reasons to collaborate and show up more meaningfully for one another, as well as further reveal the deep adaptive challenges that we must still address together. I could go on and on about the innovation and collaboration happening right now to improve the quality of life for all residents in Reno County. There are many other partners and initiatives that I would love to tell you about. So I'd welcome the opportunity to meet with you individually to talk more about what is involving in our community, as well as connect you to the specific people and organizations doing incredible work. So on behalf of our nonprofit partners, thank you for your time, your interest, and your support. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I'll let each commissioner speak for themselves if they'd like to, but I would say what a great partnership and a service that Hutchinson Community Foundation does, not only in the fact of working with the Chamber and other entities during the COVID situation that was pretty drastic for quite a while. The grant program made available to people in Reno County, as well as those entrepreneur, young entrepreneur program that I'm sorry I was, I had to miss because I was out of town. But that's kind of one of my heartfelt things.
Yep.
So I think the, the great work you've done and, and trying to bring in people also to help community growth is exceptional. So I'll let the other commissioners.
Yeah, I'd echo that. Carrie, thanks for being here. Appreciate the partnership of the Hutchinson Community Foundation and, and your other partners. And, and it's clear that there's, there's just a significant amount of work that your agency and your foundation and, and your partners do for this community. And, and, you know, we, we, this, this body, the county cannot accomplish the things that you can do. And, and I think through a partnership like we have, we, we can, we can do many more things than, than we can do on our own. And so I, I am very encouraged and very impressed and proud of, of the work that you guys do for our community. I think it's, you know, something we should, we should acknowledge and, and understand. A lot of communities don't have a relationship like this, or a community foundation of, of the quality and size for a community our size. And so I just want to acknowledge your work and appreciate you being here to report to us and hope that, that we're doing all we can to support your efforts in, in areas we can. And certainly appreciate the, the extra, significant amount of extra work that has, has gone on between our Health Department and you and, and the community related to the COVID- nineteen response. And so thank you very much for your time and, and all of your efforts.
I would also echo the Thanksgiving by the two other commissioners to the Community Foundation and their partners during the COVID crisis and beyond. I think, Carrie, I would suggest to you that as a partner with the county and a significant party, partner, as Commissioner Freezin has said, I would hope that you would bring to us issues that you feel that are on the table that need addressed by the County Commission. But I would thank you for your presentation today.
Yeah, definitely. I think you all have shown that you're, you're absolutely willing to listen and, and kind of open the, the table for us. So I can, our, our job is to be a learning organization and to listen to our community. So as much as we can share information back and forth and kind of fill each other's gaps, that's, that's really helpful. And certainly there are, there are these adaptive challenges that are going to require some policy addressed, addressed by policy. But when we come across those very specifically, we will definitely come to you.
Thank you. And if you wouldn't mind getting a copy to Cindy for the minutes?
Yes.
Why, that would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Don, Public Works Update.
Don Britton, Director of Reno County Public Works. This is a Public Works Update that I guess I bring before the county commissioners once a year. So what I'm going to be talking about is what we're going to be doing in two thousand and twenty-one and our major projects for two thousand and twenty-one. The county asphalt crew will be overlaying thirty-one point two-five miles of road this year. There'll be four and a half miles on Fifty-Sixth Avenue between K ninety-six and Hendrix. Be six miles on G Avenue between Kent Road and Woodbury Road. Four miles on Longview Road between Haven Road and Woodbury. One mile on Irish Creek Road between Worthington Road and Woodbury Road. Eight miles on Pleasant Valley Road between Salt Marsh Road and Langdon Road. And eight miles on Sun City Road between Salt Marsh Road and Langdon Road. The county bridge crew is scheduled to build four bridges this year. Be one on Maple Grove Road, half mile west of High Point Road. One on Riverton Road Bridge, one mile north of Arlington Road. Nickerson Road Bridge, one and a half miles north of K ninety-six. And Hodge Road Bridge, two and a half miles north of Fourth Avenue. The county crew will be starting mowing their eleven hundred miles of right-of-way starting in April. And they make four rounds, the last round they mow out, so that's two rounds, two paths. So each mower this year mows a thousand miles of right-of-way each mower. We have six of them mowing. The county dirt crew is in the process of replacing bad culverts under the thirty-one point two-five miles of road that we're getting ready to overlay this year. And after that, though, is completed, they'll go back to cleaning ditches. Noxious weed crew is in the process, right now is spraying musthistle rosettes within the county right-of-way. Contracted projects for two thousand and twenty-one. Forty-third Avenue Bridge, it's two hundred and twenty-three-foot-long bridge over the Union Pacific Railroad. It's on or a little ahead of schedule and should be completed by the end of this year. Nickerson Road Bridge is a five hundred and eleven-foot bridge. It is scheduled and should be completed by August. Silver Lake Road Bridge is a sixty-six-foot-long bridge, and it is scheduled and should be completed by this month or by April. Construction will start this year on a hundred and ninety-four-foot-long bridge on Arlington Road within the city limits of Arlington. That'll start this year. Construction will start this year on a hundred and eighty-foot-long bridge on Arlington Road, eight miles east of the city of Arlington. Design of a new bridge on Ninety-Sixth Avenue over Cow Creek will start this spring and be built in two thousand and twenty-two. Current length of that bridge is a hundred and eighty-two foot. I will be bringing the engineering contract to you for approval in the near future. Design of a new bridge on Wilson Road entrance into Wildbrook over Cow Creek will start this spring and be built in two thousand and twenty-two. The current length of that bridge is two hundred and thirty-two foot long. I will bring an engineering contract for your approval in the near future. We have been awarded several federal and state programs this year, and they are: Federal Cost Share eighty-twenty for the construction of Silver Lake Road Bridge for approximately two hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three, fifty-seven is what they will pay. Federal fifty-fifty Cost Share for the construction of the Arlington Road Bridge within the city limits of Arlington for approximately six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that they will pay. Kansas Local Bridge Improvement Program for Arlington Road Bridge, eight miles east of Arlington, for two hundred thousand dollars. Federal Off-System Program eighty-twenty for the construction of the Sixty-Ninth Avenue Bridge for approximately seven hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty cents. Federal Fund Exchange for three hundred and sixty-five thousand, sixty-eight dollars and twelve cents. And I haven't chosen a project for that yet to apply that to. This is a total grand of two million, one hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-nine cents that will be applied towards building bridges this year. We're also involved in a high-risk rural roads project. This is an engineer design and study of permanent signing for major and minor collector roads. There are two stages of this project, and the first one are the county roads east of K fourteen, approximately two hundred and thirty-eight miles of roadway. This first stage of the project has approximately cost value of four hundred and forty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars at no cost to the county. The tend-to-end letting date for this project is May nineteenth of this year. We're now in the process of applying for the second stage of this project for the western two-thirds of the county. That has an estimated cost of five hundred and six thousand dollars at no cost to the county. This is updating all of our signs, them installing them and everything. So it's a good project for us. The nitrate level, now this is Yoder Water District. The nitrate level for the water district is still hovering over ten milligrams per liter. We supply water for very few residents at this time. This water is not recommended for consumption of children under the age of six months. I have looked at many options, and all of them have issues. Randy and I will be working on this, and we still are. Yoder and Habit Sewer Districts. Three options have been studied, and it appears at this time, a rehabilitation of separate districts or joint rehabilitation is the path at this time. Problem is the cost of the project and the limited amount of users. We're seeking out options to pay for this project, and after that has been determined, we will then choose the best option and have meetings with the residents of both districts. KDOT Agreements, I'm working on this. There are two agreements that we will have to be negotiated between KDOT and Reno County. We are now discussing the KDOT Special Maintenance Agreement. This, this agreement discusses what the county is going to maintain within the KDOT right-of-way on K ninety-six bypass. KDOT presented an agreement, KDOT presented an agreement to me at the time was not acceptable. I made some changes and identified other items needed more discussion for clarity. I have not had heard back from KDOT yet. I'm expecting to hear from them anytime. I had a meeting with the Grant Township trustee, and he asked if I would represent them concerning the agreement and how it affects the township. I said I would. The second agreement will be about the turnback moss we will receive from KDOT due to the K ninety-six bypass around Nickerson. I have had one meeting on this subject, and we'll have more. That's all I have unless you have questions.
I think some appreciation goes to you, Don, and your crew for the amount of work it takes to even apply for these road and bridge grants. It takes some time and, and well-presented to get that kind of assistance from federal.
Thank you.
I think there's one thing that needs to be brought out. We've talked about it. And that's when the bypass occurs, it's going to add sixteen miles?
No, approximately eleven.
Approximately eleven miles, plus one more bridge over the Arkansas River.
Yes.
That will be turned back to the county to maintain in the future. So that's a considerable amount of, of infrastructure that we will have to maintain after that time. And I know you're working on an agreement.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Yeah. I, I would echo the chairman's comments that it, it's awesome that you guys are getting grants for our roads and bridges that we don't have to pay for. Somebody's going to get that money. And if, if you can get it for Reno County, I'm very appreciative. I think it's a great example for other departments in the county of, you know, I certainly am looking for ways to reduce taxes in the county. And if every department got as many grand dollars as your department, I think, I think we could, we, we could increase our ability to do that. So thank you for that. You know, we, we had a chance to, you, you had a chance to give me a tour of your department. Very impressed. You, you run a very tight ship over there. I, I've seen very few governmental departments that are that, that well-maintained and that, just well-run. And so I, one of the things we talked about, and I would, I would encourage you to do, Don, is do an open house to show the public what you do out there. Because I, I think a lot of times, you're one of the bigger spenders because you got a lot of infrastructure to maintain. And, and I think people see the spending and they don't see what you're doing with their money all the time. And, and I would, it, it made me feel better just going out there and seeing that you're taking very good care of, of the county's money. So I wanted to thank you for, for your hard work on that. And I noted here that you were, you offered to help grant township. And, and I know that's been a, you know, off-and-on thing in the past of just, you know, there's, there's a lot of townships in the county and, and, you know, there's, I don't know, how many are there?
Thirty-two.
So there's thirty-two of them and one of you. And, and I'm sure there's a lot of different personalities amongst that bunch. And so I'm sure that's a challenging part of your work too. So I appreciate you working with them on that. I had a specific question for you. On, on Forty-third Avenue, that, that railroad. How much is our cost of, of construction increased when we, when we go over a railroad?
Well, when we first was going to build that road, that bridge over that railroad, we figured it'd be a hauntslab bridge at the same size of bridge and covering a single track that is existing there, was existing there. But the railroad insisted on having a bridge with an opening large enough for three tracks and a side road on each side of it. And that took out the possibility of building a hauntslab bridge because they, they don't build them that long. So that created a totally different kind of bridge, and it just blew up. So that created a totally different kind of bridge, and it just blew up from there. And we got so far into it and so committed into it that it was really too late to turn back. And that's why this bridge is so expensive, is due to what the railroad demanded.
You think it doubled in cost?
Yes, it more than doubled.
I, you know, I've had some experience with railroads on, you know, in my work and in my private business, and similar situation. You're held hostage a lot of times, and I just made note here, and I'll certainly make note to our legislators that I think there could be some work done at the state level to, certainly there's, we have to work with them, but at the end of the day, this is costing taxpayers all over the state significant amounts of money, and I think there could be a better compromise in what authority they have, you know, and I think that would have to be done at the state level. But I think they're, they have a little too much, too much authority right now, and we have too little. And I think it needs to be balanced better, so I'm happy to take that back for you, Don. Appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sellers, any comment?
Well, I echo both of your remarks, and I think Commissioner Friesen's thoughts about working through our state resources to communicate the problems of how railroads can increase costs without anybody having any power to control those costs. I think that's an excellent thing either for our state-county associations or to make known to our legislators. I think it might be appropriate to ask the county administrator to draft a letter to our local legislators of the substance that Daniel was speaking about. I think it's a point that will go on forever unless somebody tries to move it in the other direction. A question to Don, the Yoder Water and Yoder Sewer Districts have been in front of the commission for the last couple of years. Are we, are we going to have time to make this happen before it's a crisis?
Yes, we need to be, we need to get started on it, and KDHE has also told us that many times, and they know we're working on it. It all comes down now to how we're going to pay for it, and Randy and I have discussed some new options here that he'll probably be getting with you with, but it's all about the money.
Okay. Well, I think, as you've indicated, that needs to be a high-priority item to keep that moving so that someday we just don't decide that there's neither water nor sewer available to those people. I wonder if as that group of people realizes the magnitude of the problem that they have, is there any communication with the residents that's involved in both those areas so that they know the issue that the county's working on?
Well, as far as the sewer districts, the residents really don't know any difference. It's the fact that the system is wore out and we have to discharge, and that's an issue. As far as Yoder Water, yeah, they're aware of the nitrate level and aware that, I don't know that they're aware of what we're trying to do about it, but there are several options that I've, you know, drilling a new well and tying on to another water district, and I've looked at, and now drilling a new well, I don't think is an option, and the other options are still up to money, and that's something that Randy is going to be bringing forward to you to deal with that. But as far as the sewer districts, the residents, there's not an issue there.
Hey, thank you.
You know, Don, I might make your phone ring a little more, but I would put an appeal out to the people out in the country that when they see noxious weeds, specifically the little purple flowers that come up, that you inform public works of where they're at. You guys drive this every day, and our public works don't, they don't have the manpower nor the time to drive every county road ever so often to catch the blooming, and so I would just put a request out to our citizens in the rural area to, please, if you see something, give public works a call so they're knowledgeable about it, because there's certain temperatures and wind conditions that make it impossible to immediately do eradication. So they need time. Thank you, Don.
I just wanted to follow up on what Commissioner Sellers had on the utility work you're doing in the Yoder area. When would, what's an approximate timeline of when that work would be started?
Yep, well, as Don said, it's about the finances. Once we find a, I guess, a reasonable financing alternative, this is a $3 million project just for the sewer, two sewer districts, around 100 users. So the finances, we're trying to figure that out, whether we can use some of this federal money coming in, this 12 million, can we use it for that? Or if there's other options, or do we just need to bond it for 40 years? So we're working on that right now, probably within the next couple of months. We need, if not sooner, we need to have a decision or a recommendation, have a meeting with the residents down there. But we probably need, and then the engineering is relatively, I mean, they've done a good amount, so maybe within the next year to start construction.
I think if we'd find out the financing pretty quick and then get with engineering, get it designed, I think that they'd be building that infrastructure in 2022.
Yeah, I was just curious, like, maybe one of you told me this, but aren't they only paying like $8 a month or something?
Yeah, or less. It's, that's, that's going to be a shock to them, because no matter what we do or how it's paid for, their utility bill is going to raise quite a bit and probably be more in line with what everybody else pays for utilities.
Unfortunately, the planning ahead wasn't sufficient in order to repair, replace, renovate the facilities according to KDHE, and it just wasn't looking far enough ahead to increase any reserves to even make a dent in the project. Is that correct?
That's correct. We have one sewer district that doesn't even have enough money to actually pay for what our technicians are doing down there. That's, that's how, but in that residence, you know, there's probably, you know, 10 users. So it's, I guess that's a part of the county being over utilities. We have to deal with it, and now it's going to, it's going to be a shock to people when we have to deal with it, and now we have to. Can't put it off any longer.
And we have to do this in order to have any kind of opportunities to attract business in the area, because they have to have sufficient water and a sufficient way to handle wastewater. Okay, thank you, Don.
That's all you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Health Department, leave your, thanks. Carla, welcome.
Good morning, county commissioners. We have several business items to bring to you, but the end of the business items, Commissioner Friesen, you wanted to talk about the upcoming mask mandate. Since Dr. Polly is here, our medical consultant, I would like to have that discussion to go first since he's got patients waiting at the clinic for him. So if we can please have that discussion, that would be appreciated. Dr. Polly?
Yeah, let's save Dr. Polly some time.
Yes.
He's got business to attend and patients waiting.
As do you as far as business to attend to. Quickly, thank you all for your kindness, professionalism, collegiality. You all are an excellent representation of what the state and county is about. I just want to make a point to thank you all for that the past few months. Of course, we've seen a very welcomed and appreciated downward trend in our COVID case rates and with that associated deaths. We have had innumerable hospitalizations and a lot of deaths over this year. I don't want us to forget that, but I'm grateful that we're at a much better point right now. Allows us to take a breath medically and also economically, et cetera. A lot of lessons have been learned since this all came about in the fall, and especially when our numbers drastically went up. I'm grateful to the public for their adopting of mitigation measures, social distancing, masking. I know it's all a sacrifice. It has worked. The studies have come out to support what was all thought early on, and that data continues to grow. How we continue to use those mitigation measures in the future is still to be determined. We kind of have our foot on the throat of this rabid animal, to use an analogy. I'm not sure at what point and how much you can take your foot off its neck before it's able to escape from under your foot. I will say the arrival of the vaccinations slash immunizations couldn't be better timed. I think that is our best defense against a recurring surge or surges. I'd like to thank the Health Department and those other bodies within the county who are working tirelessly, and I don't say that figuratively, literally tirelessly, to get not only the most susceptible in our county, but also those of us who may be less susceptible, but also act as vectors of transmission to get immunized, because that's our only way out from under this. I don't know how long our window of opportunity is to keep getting the immunizations out before we see another surge or worse, the arrival of one of the variants, meaning mutations that are out there. But we're working towards that, as I know it's constantly on your mind and the minds of our citizens. A topic going on around the state right now is the mask mandate. As we know, mandates are associated with a state of emergency. You usually hear those two words combined, and the legalese of it would combine those two. There's no finite line on when to call something an emergency or not. I would say we're in a better position as we are before. From a medical standpoint, I just ask the community for buy-in and patience and practice with mitigating measures, if not through a mandate on their own, because that will buy us time to get more people immunized and eventually hit some form of a tipping point to protect quote-unquote "the herd." Whether we don't want to admit it or not, we are part of a herd. That's why it's called herd immunity, and if we don't have a high degree of resistance to this as a herd, we are set up for failure. That weakness in the armor will see everything, everything come crumbling down. So I know there's big moves at the state level. The governor's likely to sign something today. I'm not a policymaker, as I've spoke with you both before, but I do think there's multiple ways to skin a cat, including suppressing a virus. So my main goal up here today is for those persons listening that necessarily aren't on the commissioner part of the Health Department, is these mitigation measures work, distancing, masking, not in your car while you're by yourself. Let's be just as practical on one side as the other, not when you're out 15 miles from anybody, but when you're in proximity to other people, whether it's a store, whether it's a gathering in your place of worship. I ask people, please be respectful, and I also ask that if the mandate is opted out of at the county level, please respect those other citizens, your friends, your family members, the businesses who want to have a mask requirement. Let's not see what we've seen in other states of arguments and fighting and bickering and violence or even high degrees of rhetoric. Let's be respectful. We can all get through this together. We are seeing large surges slash recurrences across the world, including Italy and Brazil. I think we are in a lucky position timing-wise where we do have this window, we do have the immunization. Those other places got beat to the punch by a surge. I don't necessarily care how we go about it, but we need that public buy-in. Please do your part, just like the muss thistles. Just as Commissioner Hurst mentioned, every member of the public is driving those county roads. Every member of that public is going to their place of worship, to the stores, just as much as it is taking care of those muss thistles. More so, please take care of yourself, your neighbors, your loved ones by doing the simple things. My understanding is wearing a mask doesn't hurt our economy like shutting things down. In no way, shape, or form do I want us to get to the point where we even consider shutting things down. So mandate or not, again, that's a policymaker's decision. I think we're in a better place. Let's stay in a better place and not revisit what we saw through the late fall and winter.
Thank you, Dr. Polly.
Thank you.
Do we want to allow the Health Department to speak on this matter?
I think so. They have things, is that all right with you to let the Health Department go ahead?
Fine.
Okay.
We just want to reiterate that we do believe and support wearing a mask and the mitigating things that we have been pushing out the entire time, washing your hands, social distancing, staying at home when you are sick. These things have slowed the virus. It's gotten us to where we're at right now, and we would really appreciate and respect everybody to continue to do those things as we get this immunization out. As Dr. Polly just said, getting the immunization out, it's a small window before those other variants get here, and that is one more mitigating thing that we can do, and we would appreciate everybody to get that vaccine as it's available to you.
Okay.
Thanks, Karen.
Do we want to take up this topic now? I think we're fresh on our minds. Let's take up this topic right now, the mask mandate, item D, that you talked about earlier.
I've got a few comments if you'd like me to start or?
That's fine.
Whatever you want to do, Chairman. Thank you, Karen and Dr. Polly, and thank you to your patients that are probably waiting or got rescheduled or, I know this is difficult on certain days for you, and I appreciate you coming in here again today and appreciate all of the work. This is a challenging topic, one that I've gotten emails on, on both sides on. I, I'm, you know, it's something that I think is even more challenging on a day when, you know, I have some thoughts and I think I'm ready to move on this matter, and I might even be willing to make a motion, but allow other commissioners certainly to comment first. But, you know, on a day when we're celebrating the Health Department's hard work and accreditation, I don't want this conversation to devalue that, and it's an unfortunate set of circumstances that we're talking about both on the same day, but I appreciate what you guys do, and I really believe the health community here and the Health Department is doing what they think is best, and I think we have a little different job to do that's a little different than just looking at it strictly from a medical perspective. And so I, you know, like I said two weeks ago, I think a mandate established by the state or this county requires significant evidence and basis for its purpose, and the longer we go with a temporary order or a mandate, the stronger the evidence has to be, and I think we're kind of going the other direction right now. You know, we've gone another two weeks since we brought this up, and my questions then are kind of the same, you know, are we at a point to where the evidence suggests that this is, this is a necessary mandate? And I want, want to be clear that I'm not, I am not in a position to make medical advice, and I'm not disagreeing with the advice of the consensus of our health community that Dr. Polly mentioned and the consensus of the Health Department. So to me, this is not a discussion about whether masks work really at all. I think this is a discussion of whether we have sufficient, a sufficient scenario at the present time to create a mandate. And, you know, if we look at it in that respect, you know, I've gotten, like the other commissioners, I'm sure have gotten a lot of emails on this. I think maybe more than wind. I'm sure have gotten a lot of emails on this, I think maybe more than wind now. And, you know, you can kind of put it in too broad categories. There's people that are frustrated and upset and tired of the mandate, and they claim their liberties have been violated, and there's insufficient evidence, and, you know, one of the things that I do agree with on their side is that, you know, there could potentially be negative outcomes to some of these decisions that we don't know about today. On the other side, you've got, you know, strong medical advice, and there are people that really strongly fear contracting the disease, and, you know, there are people that think that if we exempt ourselves, that an uptick in cases will occur. And I generally find, you know, there's things right on both sides, and there's things wrong on both sides. And so, you know, at the end of the day, I just need to make up my mind on where I'm at. And so here's what I wrote. You know, I think, as I said, emergency orders are unique and temporary, and they generally span only days, and this is very unique for people. And our current status, from what I can see, I've looked at, I look at our COVID dashboard board, you know, all of the primary factors we used in designating our status are in the green, you know, and we call that new normal in our status, and it says, "Cases are rare. Contract tracing can be used to control the virus. Take everyday precautions." I think a mandate is outside what I would call everyday precautions, and so I think given our own status indicates that probably we should do this. I think we also have a risk of, you know, crying wolf, asking the public to comply with certain things when an issue isn't emergent, and we need to give some relief there, because I think it's a fair theory that we could have another November in November if there's a variant or whatever, and so we certainly want people to be ready to help again and not push this issue too far. You know, I think there's data from other states, you know, you can look at where Texas is, you can look at Fannie County that did this in December, and there's really no correlation at this point in upticks. And to me, this spans beyond a medical situation, you know, there are decisions, this is kind of, to us, at our level, this is a health, safety, and welfare decision, and, you know, in that there are items to consider, including legal, you know, economic, you know, secondary effects, and just impact to a lot of areas beyond just medical, and for those reasons, you know, I would be, you know, in support of an exemption of this county at this time for those reasons. I want to reiterate, well, number one, if this is the wrong decision, I'll be the first to admit that and take the blame for it. I do think our community needs to be pushed a little bit on this, and I think that's our job to, you know, look at all of the information and say, hey, you know, this is a time we need to maybe move forward and let go of some of our fear, and so I'm willing to take that again and take that blame. And this wasn't a decision I made lightly, and of course, the other two commissioners get to speak yet, and they can disagree with me. But, you know, I think it's time, and, but I want to reiterate, I think when we do this, that pushes more towards personal responsibility and protecting ourselves and others, and we need to do, I mean, that becomes even more critical when a mandate isn't in place. And I agree with Dr. Polly, we need to respect everybody's opinion on this issue, and those opinions are physically shown on those people that wear masks and those that don't, and I think we need to respect both sides of that opinion right now. And I just want to reiterate at the end of this, and appreciate the extra time I have here. Mr. Chairman, I don't want this to be confused with me saying masks don't work, because I'm not the expert to say that. I think you should ask a doctor you trust and get their opinion. We need to listen to the medical professionals, you know, we routinely trust with our lives. You know, I don't know why this is in any different situation. I, again, have the utmost respect for all those involved in our community that have battled the virus, and I'm very thankful for your work. I'm very hopeful that this decision will potentially spark some new optimistic look forward in Reno County. So thank you again for the extra time, Mr. Chairman. Those are my thoughts on the matter.
Commissioner Sellers?
Okay, I have several questions, and I hope staff can answer these questions. First area I'd like to go into is, when is the effective legal date of Senate Bill 40? My understanding is it was passed by the legislature, and the governor said that she was going to allow it to become law. What is that effective date?
Commissioner Sellers, from what we understand, it has not been signed by the governor, so there's not a date on there. I believe it's on her desk, from the information I have.
The Senate bill itself probably specifies when it would be effective. Of course, it can't be effective before the governor approves it or her time for approving it, otherwise. Frequently, legislation is effective as of July 1, but the legislation itself can specify an earlier date. So if we had Senate Bill 40, it might tell us that. I don't have it.
Okay, my second question, again, to the staff, is, again, a legal question, is my understanding from the county administrator, but I'd like both the administrator and the legal counsel to reply to my question, is we, my understanding is the county commission cannot lift the mask mandate without a legal document declaring that that is happening. Is that document available today?
Yes, Commissioner Joe had prepared a possible resolution draft in case the county commission wants to do it today. It's similar to the one that was passed in July of last year, when the county, for about a week, had opted out of the governor's mask mandate. So there is one here available, if the commission wants to vote on that and approve it effective today.
And that document basically reverses what we did prior?
It opts out of the governor's mandate, and Joe, do you want to?
This is a resolution that was in your packets two weeks ago, I think, for that meeting, in case it was to be taken up that day. This resolution is virtually identical to the one you adopted on July 2, which opted out of the governor's executive order 2052. It said at that time, and as it does today, that it still says that there's a proviso that this Board of County Commissioners finds that mask use is a fundamental health practice that can mitigate the spread of COVID-19 because it creates a barrier for the expulsion and spreading of any respiratory virus, and because the wearing of such masks in many circumstances prevents the spread of COVID-19 to others. For these reasons, the prudent wearing of masks and other protective face coverings during these times is highly encouraged and recommended. That's the same language that we used in July. But then it goes ahead and says that pursuant to your authority, this Board of County Commissioners, with the findings that are set out above, exercises local authority over this subject that will be less restrictive than required by the provisions of Executive Order Number 2052 and Executive Number 2068 in the following respects, and that is, the use of cloth or other masks or face coverings is not mandated within Reno County. This resolution, which is really a public health order of Board of County Commissioners, specifies a time of 12:01 a.m., and the date is blank as to when it's effective. You would need to specify that date for this to be completed, and that's how it reads at this time. Did I answer your question?
I believe so. I guess I have a question of legal procedure here. The motion to put this onto the agenda was for discussion. Specifically, heard Commissioner Freez and Say for discussion. With that being the motion on the agenda, is it appropriate for a vote on this today?
When I was asked to put it on here, I put it on as item D, business item.
Okay, I won't belabor the point.
But I think your answer is yes, it could be discussed and then action taken on it. We've done this before, when it's been a discussion item in previous, not very often, but we have done it, because it hasn't come up very often. Okay, thank you.
Where are you at, Commissioner Sellers?
Well, I guess, I'm coming from two directions, is I would like to know when Senate Bill Number 40, it would be effective, because I think that dictates our policy 100%, and nobody seems to be able to answer that question. And I guess we had an agreement two weeks ago that we would probably remove this on the 30th of this month, and so it seems like to me that that was an agreement that most of the citizens of Reno County heard all of us say that we would take this up again. Citizens certainly didn't have noticed today that we were even going to discuss this, so our email couldn't have been even larger than it was on this issue. And I just think that something of this nature, that's this important, we should be doing it in a procedurally decent manner, and to bring it up today when it was agreed by the three of us two weeks ago, and I think most of us agreed at that point that on March 30th we would lift this. I feel like we're bringing this out of thin air today.
I appreciate your comments with regard to that. The discussion also at that time was, we hadn't, I believe Commissioner Freezin said, "We don't know where SB 40 is going," at that time. And so I hear where you're coming from, Commissioner Sellers.
I mean, wasn't that opportunity two weeks ago?
Excuse me?
Wasn't the opportunity for the public to make comment, or, I mean, generally speaking, I think the opportunity is for the public to, you know, observe this discussion, and that's why it's on the agenda. It's less on there to take particular public comment, although we would take it at any time.
Yeah.
But I think it was on there two weeks ago, and it's been in the news, and there's been significant opportunity for the public to make comment, and I've received plenty of comment, and I guess I'm not of the opinion that those comments are going to change much in the next week, but...
The difference to me, Commissioner Sellers and Freezin, is the fact that SB 40 was approved veto-proof, so it was a vast majority. And I'm going to make a few comments now, if that's okay. I really have enjoyed working with the Reno County Health Department, Karen, Megan, and Carla, with respect to our discussions we've had in coming up with something that was workable, at least in my point of view. I think it boils down to, it's always boiled down to this, respect one another, follow proper health procedures, wash your hands. If you're sick, stay at home. Respect one another. Those things still are in play, and should be in play year-round, 365 days a year, forever. It's just part of what we were taught as young kids. I'm not going to be as eloquent as my other commissioners, because I'm going to, I am in favor of lifting the mask mandate, but on the same hand, a little plain common sense, and folks, if you, if a business wants you to wear a mask, if a family member, or if a church, or anybody else wants you to wear a mask, plain language, don't be a horse's petoot, put on a mask, you know? It's just, respect one another, okay? If the school system wants the kids to wear a mask, go with it. Don't, don't, now, I think I've probably said enough on that, but that's my view. And so I would, I would move to approve Resolution Number 7, Day 21, is that right? 21 Day 7, to opt out of the mask mandate. I'll cover some more in discussion.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to pass approved Resolution 21 Day 7. Discussion, as I said before, folks, just be, respect one another, respect another business, follow proper guidelines, you know, it's just not, you don't have to try to pull your weight one way or another, just do what's right. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Freezin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Well, let me explain my vote. I feel blindsided by this coming up today, when my expectations was, and understanding that two votes, my understanding was that we had a gentleman's agreement to lift this on the 30th, and that's why we're having a special meeting, my understanding. So maybe there's no need for that special meeting on the 30th, if we take this action today. I'll vote no.
Mr. Chairman, I think there's a point of procedure or something that the counselor would like to make, and ask that be made.
I pulled up Senate Bill 40 on the internet. Its effective date, if adopted, would be its publication in the Kansas Register. That's customarily July 1.
Okay. So that would be July 1, Commissioner Sellers? Did you hear that would be effective then?
Yeah, I don't know that was procedural, but, yeah.
Appreciate it.
Sorry.
Finished roll call?
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes, yes. Okay. And that's by no means any disrespect to the Health Department, or Dr. Polly, Dr. Dugner, or anybody. Now, Carla?
So with me... So with me today is Megan Gotchak, and she is our Assistant Director of Population Services, Karen Hammersmith, which is our Health Official, and also our Assistant Director of Clinical Services, and then Bethany Jansen, and she is our Accountant for the Health Department. So as we go through these agenda items, hopefully I have the expertise that I need to be able to answer your questions. So the first agenda item is the Community Health Assessment and Community Health Improvement Plan. So I'm going to start on just the agenda item and go through the summary with you and answer any questions that you have. So the Community Health Needs Assessment, it's a systematic process involving citizens of a community to identify and analyze community health needs. This data leads to the development of a plan to action to address the most pressing and important health issues, which is often called a Community Health Improvement Plan. They call it a CHIP. This process is often referred to as a CHA, CHIP, the Community Health Assessment, and then the Community Health Improvement Plan. The Community Healthcare Access Task Force, which is also named HAT, was formed to ensure a consistent forum for healthcare professionals and personnel in leadership positions and leaders of the community organizations representing all populations to connect and openly discuss community health topics, to ensure that the CHIP was addressed and followed up on regularly. Based on requirements from the state of Kansas and the Affordable Care Act, a CHA assessment is required to be conducted every five years for public health and every three years for hospitals, including Hutch Regional Medical Center. Included in this plan, each entity would have a role in the process of the Health Department, taking lead to helping to plan, organize, and hold the data for the CHA CHIP for the HAT group. In 2018, Reno County conducted its second CHA, started planning the CHIP following its publication in 2019. The CHIP identified two focus areas. Number one, system substance misuse and mental health. These two items will be the core focus for the next three years. For priority area number one, substance misuse, five goals were created to alleviate substance misuse facing issues by focusing on education, treatment and recovery, healthcare providers, data collection and analysis, and the impact of opiates. For priority area two, mental health, the goal is to support and encourage mental health awareness, care for working for community partners, reducing stigma, and improving access to mental health resources. So this complete document was presented to you for your approval. That is an overview of it, and it is, it's our working document for the Health Department for the next three years. It's why we do what we do, to help the community on the issues that we're seeing and the other community resources and partners that they're seeing. So we work together to solve these problems. We come together to address them. So we try to impact those areas in the community.
Two primary focuses doesn't really explain all of the intricacies and the work you do.
Definitely, definitely. And it is a very large document that we will, that, and again, it is a living, braving document that is not put on a shelf. It is something that we look at, we look at daily, we look at monthly, we look at any process improvement, we look at data, and we see what we can, how we can continue to focus on those areas to reduce those priority areas in the community and target those priority areas in the community. But it is a very detailed document, but that is an overview for you, and of course, the complete document was given for you for review.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
How does, how has COVID impacted your work on this issue?
I would say, we haven't looked at it. It was to be presented in 2020, and that's when the pandemic happened, and so it has been delayed because of COVID. But also because of COVID, I think these two priority areas have come out even more because of COVID. So it is a weakness in our community that we want to try to work on as a community, as community organizations, to try to target and improve. So that's why it is, they continue to be a very strong focus for us, and it's kind of like our working papers on moving forward. It is what we will try to do, and then bring you guys updates as we go through those, these target areas and these priority areas. So it is, it is an agenda item that we bring to you for your approval, please.
Okay. We'll take a motion to approve the Community Health Assessment along with the Community Health Improvement Plan, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
As presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Moved and seconded to approve the Community Health Assessment, Community Health Improvement Plan as presented by the Reno County Health Department. More discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Freezin?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hertz?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Next agenda item is the grant application for the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. So each March 15th, we do have grants that we do apply for, for the Health Department, a lot of these. So what you have is our application, it's not our approval, it is what we have applied for, and these are, these are typically grants that we apply for year after year. So the Child Care Licensing Program, the Chronic Disease Risk Reduction, and some of these you'll see, especially that Chronic Disease Risk Reduction tied directly back into that Community Health Improvement Plan. A lot of these tie back directly into that Community Health Improvement Plan. But they're also, like, there's essential services that a public health department does provide. These are founding grants to help us fulfill that mission. The different one this year is the COVID-19 ELC, Expanding Infrastructure. So that is a new grant that is for our ongoing COVID expansion and testing. That's a very large grant of $408,573, and that is an amount that is, was earmarked for us by the state that we could apply for. And a lot of that expanding infrastructure, and why they look at that is, as COVID hit our community, as it hit the Health Department, we found very many weaknesses, as far as, one of the biggest ones was having a electronic health record, which we did not. So we all know that it took us a while to get a scheduling system. It's taken us a while to then interface where we need to be. So one of the earmarked focuses on our providing better infrastructure for health departments is having an EHR. So hopefully, if something were to happen again or anything, we would be better prepared. It's looking at, it's like, looking at process improvement for health departments. So where did we find a weakness, and where can we focus on for this improvement project? That's where those dollars will be, will be spent, as lessons learned, areas of weakness that we found. Health Family Planning is another grant, Immunization Action Plan. That is our, where we go out to immunizations in the community. Maternal and Child Health, Public Health Emergency Preparedness, which of course is what we're living through now with COVID, as far as responding to that emergency. And then our State Formula. The State Formula is, as I noted on those detailed papers for you, just a kind of a, just a basic synopsis. That State Formula is just a basic operational amount mandated by the Kansas Legislature for local health departments. And so that's just a base funding that we get. So in your working documents and your papers I gave you, it's just a, just basic program mission and purpose for those grants that we do apply for. So I want to thank you for your signature on these as coming into this late and through this pandemic. I know that you guys did sign this to accommodate our approval, to make sure that we hit that March 15th deadline. It is my goal next year to bring this to you end of February, early March, so we can go through this in detail prior to asking for signature, sir.
You've seen the information and had it handed to you. What does the Commission wish to do as far as approving the grant application to the Department, Kansas Department of Health and Environment, as presented?
Sounds like we already signed it, but I would retroactively approve that.
Thank you, sir.
Pardon? I would approve, make the motion approve.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded to approve the grant application presented by the Reno County Health Department to be presented to Kansas Department of Health and Environment. Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Freezin?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hertz?
Yes. All right. Accreditation by the Public Health Accreditation Board. It's been ongoing and hard.
Yes. We are extremely delighted to present to you that our public, our Health Department has been accredited by the Public Health Accreditation Board. Bethany and Megan and Karen have been extremely, really hardworking on this for the last four years for our accreditation. And what it means, it's providing us benchmarks, and we look at other health departments for our benchmarking and providing information to the public that, that we have standards that we abide to and that we are here for their public health. So on this, we did receive a letter from the Licensing Board. It is on behalf of the Public Health Accreditation Board, staff and board directors. I want to express our sincere congratulations on your Health Department's accreditation. This achievement demonstrates your commitment to transparency, accountability, and a culture of quality improvement. We are so proud of, for you for putting your work out for peer review against national Health Department performance standards. So we do have a plaque that we have received, and we would appreciate, Lori, having our picture with you guys, please, as the Board of Health.
Well, can we do this when Commissioner Sellers is here?
Sure, sure. We can delay it and do that.
If you wouldn't mind delaying that, because I think Commissioner Sellers played a huge part in that also.
Sure, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, so we can, we'll rely on you to get back with us, and we'll make sure that we're here for those, for that photo. Thank you so much.
Try to do that next Tuesday if it's available.
Okay. No other items, sir, unless you have anything else.
No, I just, I just wanted to commend you guys and thank you for your hard work, and very impressed by the accreditation, and thankful for, like I said, all the work that you and your staff have done to get there. It sounds like it was a challenging process that took some time. So thank you for, for all the work, and like I said, it's a little unfortunate, the set of events that occurred today, and like Chairman said, one's not in relation to the other, and I'm very proud of the Health Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Please relay our support and thanks for, Megan and everyone, Karen, and everyone that was involved with the accreditation, okay?
We will.
That's a, that's a special event. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, is, I can't see who's there to present. Is Megan there today?
Yes, sir.
I might have a question that she might answer, if I might. Megan, we approved last year a $50,000 grant to New Beginnings Detox Facility. Would that be in line with the Community Health Assessment and Community Health Improvement Plan that we just retroactively approved?
Good morning, Commissioners. Megan Gotchak. Yes, that isn't aligned with the Community Health Improvement Plan. That would be under part of the Substance Misuse piece of it. So New Beginnings is a partner that we actively work with, and so, yes, all of those initiatives are, we work together as a community, and they are partners. So you will be hearing more and more as we move through the goals and the objectives of that CHIP process.
Well, I guess I ask that question because there was some criticism of that grant that we were donating to our favorite charity, and I just don't feel that that's the case. I think we were working with our community to improve health, and I'm looking forward to that facility opening. So thank you very much for that clarification. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Sellers, I thank you for bringing that up and clarifying that, because you are certainly correct in what you said.
You know, I might also suggest to Carla and Randy, and I hope the other Commissioners agree, that, you know, if there's a way to celebrate this within the Health Department, you know, if there's, you know, you know, buy the Health Department lunch or something, and, you know, maybe make a, I don't know, commemorative pen or something that shows their accreditation for the, for the staff member, something I would encourage, and I think that would be appropriate for the Health Department.
Randy and the Health Department, and Laura can work something out on that.
Yes.
How's that sound?
Sounds great.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, when I took office a year and two months ago, I think I mentioned to many people that I was around, I said, "I really don't know how the Reno County Health Department does in total." And I have to say, I still don't know in total, because they hit us in so many different areas and contribute to our well-being in so many different areas. But I obviously didn't think at the time when I said that, that we would be as closely related to the Health Department than this past 15 months. So I've learned a lot, but I'm sure I haven't learned all that they do at this point. It makes me proud, very proud, that we have the infrastructure to be able to do the things that this department does.
Well taken. Thank you all.
Thank you.
County Administrator Report?
Have a couple items to go over. The first one, I wanted to try to set a meeting, special meeting, in April, probably mid to late April, probably possibly on a Thursday, to, we will have Five Bugle will come to town when we set the date to do the fire study recommendations and his presentation. Being that this will take a little bit of time and make questions, and Fire District Chiefs may be here, it'd be good to have it on a date other than the Commission meeting. And talking with Bruce from Five Bugle, a Thursday would be the best for him. I wanted to see if the Commission would be willing to set that date sometime in April and possibly on a Thursday.
As I've related to you, the Thursday, the 22nd, or the next Thursday, the only one I wouldn't be available for is the 15th.
What time?
That would be up to you guys to set. We could, my thought is do it the same as a Commission meeting, just start at nine o'clock, and it could go all morning. Or it can be an afternoon, whatever works for you, as long as we notify the public that you guys are meeting, we'll be okay.
Any call dates? I see you looking.
Well, did you say you weren't available April 22nd?
I am available, the 22nd, providing my flight gets in.
Ignore his technology.
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure about that, where I'm at.
So maybe the 22nd or 29th, if that works for, or if there's a different day, we can have the consultant come down. It just, Thursday seemed to work.
Looking at my calendar, I would prefer April 29th, if that's open for the other two Commissioners.
Yep.
Does the morning work? If that's Commissioner Hertz?
Morning would work for me on the 29th. No, one, two, three, four, the 20, either 22nd or 29th, the morning would work.
Is there a time that, if we start at nine, or should we start earlier? If you guys have something in the afternoon?
How long you think it'll take?
Depending on discussion, it may be an hour, maybe two or three. It really, I think he's going to have a good present, or a long presentation, explanation of his studies, and then the recommendation, which may lead to a lot of questions.
I mean, just, just based on the limited information I have and previous work with some fire districts at the city... some fire districts at the city level, I would expect this to be something that's going to continue for meetings into the future and require public comment. So I hope, we've, we've tried this before and it hasn't always worked to just limit it to kind of a briefing. But if we, if we have the intent that this is the briefing phase with, with an opportunity to develop what our next action would be, then I think we could hit it in a few hours for sure. So, you know, nine o'clock would be fine with me.
With respect, we will end no later than noon.
Okay.
That way puts some time limits and, and we can get right after it. Is that okay with you, Commissioner Sellers?
Yes, sir.
So we're looking at the 29th?
April 29th, 9:00 AM to noon at the latest.
Okay.
And I'll have that scheduled for here in this room for now. If we have the annex, audio visual done by then, we may move over to the annex in case there's additional people wanting to sit in and listen. But I'll keep you informed on that part. I wanted to also bring up, just with the federal money that's going to be coming to Reno County in the next couple of months, my understanding, and I just wanted to bring this to your attention, that townships will also get money. And I'm not sure how that's going to work. They're going to be on their own in some aspects of reporting. And I believe most of what, if not all, that they do here in Reno County is roads. And with the money, with the nexus being toward COVID-19, I'm unsure exactly how they're going to spend that money or what the process is. But I just wanted to bring that out so you guys are aware in case township officials call you, they receive a check from the federal government, there's a lot of money that may be coming to them with not a lot of description. I'm not sure how the federal government's going to notify people, but that will go to them. Examples of some of the money, the estimated money, the Haven Township is expected to get around $352,000. Grove Township nine, or $10,000, the largest one, Reno Township, just under $1 million, that $966,000. So the money is going to be possibly coming to them. They may, they may look to us for questions and concerns.
I'm not so sure. We shouldn't send an information sheet out to them ahead of time, letting them know this if they don't already. And with some circumstances that they need to check out, and, and maybe when we find that information out, there could be a possibility of a meeting. But just a warning that don't just go out and spend it, that there are some guidelines with that.
Right. We wouldn't want them to just go buy a motor grader or whatever equipment that's not COVID-related that they have to report on, because then they may have to pay the, the federal government back.
What's, what's it based on? Like, population?
I believe so. It's a split that the federal government created.
And this doesn't funnel through the county?
No.
The county's not
Not on this one.
Responsible for reporting?
Correct.
Okay.
Because there's also going to be money that goes to cities, cities under 50,000. It'll go, that gets funneled through the state of Kansas and then they'll distribute it. But counties, all counties of any size get the money directly.
And the townships get it directly?
The townships get it directly. That is at least from the information I have. So...
What, and what's the county expected to receive?
Just over $12 million, which that's where we would, I would recommend us looking into. And I have been researching the Yoder inhabit sewer districts, if there's a way to justify using that money with knowing that during the COVID pandemic, people's money may be tight. It'd be hard to go from $6 a month for a resident to $100 a month to pay for the, the bond if we bonded this. Just kind of wanted to bring that up. And then, kind of an FYI, Sean just sent out an email yesterday to directors that our Canon copier lease agreement is up in the next couple of months. And so we're finding out from departments what the need is for copiers, printers, if we can reduce any before we go out to bid to get proposals for cost. We do expect the cost to go up a good amount. It's, I think, a ballpark estimate of a yearly cost is around $50,000. So it's not huge in the overall budget, but it is significant part of our budgets, because each department pays for their own. So I just kind of want to give you a heads up, because that will be coming before the commission at some point for a lease agreement.
Usually in those, Randy, there's, you get kind of a report of how many pieces of paper you print?
And we have that.
Would it be reasonable to ask for some sort of reduction by all departments in paper usage?
Yes. It has been explained to departments already, though, that that is one of the, a focus that the county commission has, you know, explained to me that they, that you guys would expect. So we can continue down that path to let them know that it'd be nice to see a reduction in the number of prints and copies that are made.
And it, it seems like some of the COVID money generally, technology is, is a pretty wide opportunity for expenditure. And with, with this money, you know, may, maybe we could, to the extent it's COVID-related at least, continue to encourage departments to start thinking about technology upgrades, given that we're going to need to spend this money. And those kind of, kind of correlate a little bit, I would say.
All right. Then the last thing I wanted to report on, and I can get more detail if you guys would like, but on this, this isn't in the packet, but on the screen shows, we are, we have completed the CRF money. The 12.6 million has all been spent, accounted for, reports have been sent to the state. So that one is pretty much complete. There may be a final, and we have audits, and there may be a final, you know, question to answers. But that money has been spent. On the screen, it does show, and I'm sorry, Commissioner Hurst and Sellers, you can't see it, sorry. But it shows the previously allocated, current allocation and total expended to date by agency. The Reno County's was a total of $3.5 million. The Reno County Program One of $1,478,324, that was for the nonprofits that received grants. And then within that, the school, the various school districts, cities, and then the State Fair Extension Office Public Library is listed here. And I can email a copy of this to the commissioners if you want to look at it in more detail. And Commissioner Sellers, I'll send this to you so you can see what I'm talking about. Didn't know if there's any questions. It's just kind of the brief overview. Other than Reno County, the largest, and the entity that received the largest amount was USD 308 that received $2.85 million. But we tried to include every city and school district in Reno County. Most of them spent some money. So I just kind of wanted to.
Randy, could you send out the, whatever you were looking at earlier on where all the money, the new money was going?
For the townships?
Well, yeah, I assume the cities are on there too. Any, do we, do we have a report like county-wide of?
Of not all the entities. I have one that shows the townships.
Okay.
But I don't, I can look and see with that email, because that's the page I looked at on the, the email I received on the allocations. So I can look to see what else there is and send it to you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Sellers, do you have any to bring forward?
Well, the county administrator said that we were finalized with the $12 million COVID allocation to all the entities. And I guess, I think we should express our appreciation to John Deardell and Gary Major and certainly on the county staff, Leslie, because without that group, I think we would have had a difficult time implementing the program. And maybe give credit where it's due. I, if I'm not mistaken, it was our county administrator's idea to hire John Deardell and Gary Major to direct that. And all along during that process, it's been a positive, positive, positive. And so I thank you, Randy, for getting on top of that day one, or I think we could have had not as successful a program. That's all I have.
Well, you know, and to follow up with Commissioner Sellers' comments, you know, perhaps we ought to, I mean, it seems like we got a pretty big effort in front of us with additional funding that needs to, I assume, Randy, you're probably thinking about a similar course of action. And I don't know why we wouldn't engage them again and have them start, you know, providing thoughts on how we're going to do this. I mean, which...
Yeah, once, with the $12 million, once we receive some, I guess, more information about what it can be spent on and how to do it, we will probably need outside assistance. And whether Gary, John are available, that may be great help. I, you know, I can talk with them. Leslie, you know, see if she may need some assistance. But that's something, once we get more details, I would like to look at that opportunity. But I also, as Commissioner Sellers said, Leslie spent numerous hours on this. It's done a great job. Gary and John were phenomenal. They were definitely what, the three of them made this work. So I do want to thank them for all the work they put in on this.
What, that sounds, wait, did they, is there a deadline of when the money has to be spent?
December 31st, 2024. So we can get the first 50% within 60 days of when the president signed the bill. And then the remaining half, 12 months later.
So, but two and a half years?
Two and a half, yes. And we'll get the first $6 million this year, and then next year we'll get the other $6 million.
It's...
That's still not a lot of time to spend, that kind of money.
Well, I mean, sounds a little scary.
Anything else?
Nope, thank you.
All right. I don't believe I have anything more. The version, yes.
Commissioners, the resolution you passed 2021-7, the effective date, I don't know, it was on the resolution, but what is the?
It's not on.
No, it's not there.
So what, so what date do you want the mask to be, the mask, or the opting out of the governor's mask mandate to be in effect?
The earliest date would be 12/01 tomorrow morning. So today's the 23rd.
Third?
So the earliest date would be the 24th, but any date you care.
I would say we pass it today. It'll be effective tomorrow. Especially since the other one wouldn't be effective until July 1st, so.
So would there be a motion, a motion to complete that resolution by inserting the effective date as March 24th?
Commissioner Sellers, I believe you were starting to say something?
Well, I'm not trying to counter what the county councilor said on the effective date of Senate Bill 40, but for some reason, I just can't imagine that it's effective July 1st, because that, I think that's an emergency bill by the Senate, and their intentions are to make it done quickly. So I just question the July 1st, but I don't know that that has any effect on the date that we opt out, so.
I would get on with it. I would move that the resolution 21-07 take effect on 12/01/24 of this month.
Second.
Okay, seconded. Any other further discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes. Okay, motion approved. And there'll be a, something when you get back to sign. So, and that's, county councilor, do you have anything more?
I have nothing.
All right.
Thank you.
Consider the meeting adjourned. Thank you for joining, Commissioner Sellers.
No problem.